We can't prohibit speakers from using those Zoom or false names and none of the options, you know, that are listed stop workarounds and we may still experience hate speech even if we do comply with one of the options.
Yeah, so no doubt.
No.
That's it, man. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, I understand the standard concerns, but isn't it also true that anyone could come in here during the public comment hearing and say whatever they want and as long as it's not disrupting the meeting, it would be possible?
Speech is protected by the person and just like any other, or is speech the only thing that's prohibited is speech that's likely to incite violence?
Yeah, the other thing that I would add is that what we were seeing during this time and where other cities were seeing was that people were calling from all over the place and using technology, we assume, to be able to figure out what how somebody's are going to, you know, zoom in and make their public comments.
And I've said it was at the California City of Paris conference last week and on the topic of discussion that some of the cities that had given hate speech comments around the same time we did did not stop remote public comment have gotten hate speech returned.
Good, okay, thank you. Councilmember Levers.
Did you survey the cities of San Clara County on whether they allow Zoom or not?
I think previously the clerk's office did some surveying to see what cities were doing.
Does anyone kind of off the top of their head know?
Yeah, I don't know that I can I can answer that. I belong to the Cities Association, we that's been a topic of discussion there too. Some do, some don't. I don't know the actual number, but it's.
In some cities from the get-go after COVID don't allow, you know, Zoom public comments.
Exactly. They dropped it because we never had it before. Okay, thank you.
All right. Have you already answered the question?
No.
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify, so we enjoy, and I'm sorry to my colleagues who have heard these questions before, but we do enjoy the option to use remote privilege access to city council meetings, correct, as council members? Yes, there are restrictions, you know, about how and when it is allowed.
And John can speak more to those.
Yeah, so we've gone back to the day before COVID when there are some exceptions for extraordinary circumstances that would allow council members to participate. So if the council member is ill or they go to the council meeting, they can, two times they can participate remotely without opening up their home to the public. In those circumstances, the camera has to be on, direct the entire meeting, and anybody over the age of 18 that's in the same room has to be produced. Otherwise, before we go to the pre-COVID, where council members can attend from a remote location, but that remote location has to be posted 72 hours in advance, has to be open and accessible to the public, maybe media compliant, and members of the public have to be allowed to participate from where other council members are participating.
They get for landing turns off all for the public. I've used this many times, as I know my colleagues have as well, not just here, but throughout the county, whenever we do travel, which is something that's very common for residents to do and need to call in for Zoom access. And, you know, something as easy as traveling for work or city business, and we're able to call in remotely. And so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we enjoy that privilege very easily and readily. I also looked at the options, there were three options to put verification. My colleague had talked about the cost. Two of those options do not have a cost, correct?
Okay, so the staff report leaves out three different options. So one is doing authentication through Zoom, which doesn't have a cost to an external agency, so just staff time. And then same with the second one, which required more staff time. And then the third gets using an outside vendor and has a cost of $2,000 annually.
Right, so again, two options with no additional cost. I think that cost is very minimal, it's $2,000 on the third option, which isn't even the preferred option recommended by staff. I also wanted to ask, doesn't the county, San Clara County, allow remote access, which has 1.2 million residents, whereas we have 45,000?
Don't you know about the county?
I know, I have just participated in their meeting, so I can tell you I do, but. Okay. I wanted to ask the question as we're working in question format. And then, as my colleague had mentioned, we can have that behavior, whether it's here in the chambers or it is online. We say we're not here to do, we said we're here to do the business of the people. And so I just want to acknowledge that that's a possibility, no matter what, where we're doing that, whether that's online or here. Would you agree? It is a possibility.
Yeah, and that was just mentioned in previous comments, that Councilmember Spring mentioned how, you know, people still can come here and then what we saw with Zoom, it was probably people from all over that were using technology to Zoom in and just hit a lot of different meetings by doing that. So you would have less people and, you know, that would be motivated to come in and do what they did online from the comfort of their homes.
Maybe we could have a room full of people. I'm just saying it's possible in either way. The other question is, is this used readily for other boards that people may serve on as far as people calling in? And I know that that does happen as well. I am chair of the ETA pack board, we take Zoom comments, we also take in-person comments. I know that happens at a number of different boards. And then finally, we become to rely very heavily on technology more and more so, and this has permeated all departments of the city. And so, you know, I would just ask the question, do we not also want to be leaving in technology and access to our residents as well here, which we are in 20, we just got that with program here. So that's, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Question.
Can we, I'll tell you, let's, I don't have any other questions, let's go to, we'll come back, we'll go to public comment.
Yes, Armando Martinez.
Good evening, council members. So this Monday I attended a San Clara County verification supervisors meeting. They allowed both Zoom meeting and in-person viewing and Zoom comments. I made a public comment and listened to comments from others through Zoom. It was great to know those people got to participate remotely and we heard their voices. I also attended the last morning unit of municipal district meeting, which allows also both Zoom meeting and Zoom comments. I was on the opposite end of that one, where I heard in-person public comment, but I was not able to attend in person, but I sure took advantage and made a Zoom comment. So my voice was heard and I was learned out of that. And I also got to hear the people who made the comments in person. So we're talking about community engagement. That is an important goal. It's no better goal. It is a workable, worthwhile goal to allow full participation using all means available. We have the technology, we have the means to allow individuals, elderly persons, disabled persons, parents with full loads with their parental responsibilities who cannot make it here. There are many more, there are many reasons why people cannot make it here on time, they're working, they're doing their house things. Now, I didn't want to say, well, that was somebody called in and what they did, they exercised their right to free speech. It was hateful speech, but it is their right. Their right to make it, we have a right to make it. And just because somebody decided to come in and make hateful speech, which is not, it's not even the general, we never had that happen before, but it happened, why should we snub the right for everybody? I ask you to give full force to community engagement. Give those citizens, whatever, whatever way you say cannot attend in person, to exercise their right to make comments and express their points of views, their positions, to guide you in your decision making. Don't get those who want to make comments just because somebody came in and exercised their right to freedom of speech, which is valuable in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, Kim.
We're going to close public comment, bring it back for.
But there's someone Zoom, is that not true? You don't have anybody on Zoom. Yvonne is just, you're asking for public comment on Zoom, we don't offer public comment right now on Zoom. I thought you were gonna make a joke and laugh at that, but I didn't hear the laugh.
There wasn't another comment?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, then have that for councilmember Levers.
No.
It's a long thing.
Yes.
I want to ask our city manager, since she presented this, and it kind of goes with what my colleague Yvonne has to say. So as council members, we still would be allowed to Zoom in. This decision we're making tonight has to do with the public.
That is correct. Zooming in sends them to the west.
Yes, right, okay.
But I just want to be clear, they want to understand, we're not excluded from this system.
Correct.
No. My thing is that we can.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, in preparation of tonight, I was looking around at what's happening, and I don't know if that's an option, but it looks like some cities try to work around this by only allowing comments remotely if they are related to a specific agenda item. And the benefit of doing that is if the presiding officer, the mayor, in our case, to actually legally interrupt the speaker if they do not speak on a particular agenda item, whereas if it happens to you, if you have an open public comment, you have to let them talk. There is a distinction there. It seems, I'm not that I can give legal advice. Have you heard that as well?
I've heard that there are cities exploring that, I don't know if any of them actually are doing it.
So Tacoma and Seattle are doing that, it seems.
I mean, California, yeah. See, you can't afford any of that. I think there are some cities considering it, I don't know any of them.
And to me, that seems to be an option that I think we could work with.
I will mention, just in talking with people from other agencies, they did get public comments outside of just a general public comment, right, it's not on the agenda. And what would end up happening is they would take the item and start their public comment consistent with the item. So say if it was a tree contract, and then they would talk about tree contracts, and then basically start into their, to the chapter of that, so they would transition in. So they'd start relevant and then transition out.
No, I understand that, and that is possible, but it can happen here in the room too, if they, so I, I guess, but it would give the presiding officer the tool to say, shut that person off, where he cannot do that during the public comment period of like those three minutes. There's a difference of how much power, I mean, that's an important thing. You know, I'm torn on this one, because I don't understand hate speech getting up out of my life, but when in doubt, I have thought that, you know, we should make it as easy as possible for residents that cannot be, you know, by the six o'clock to call in and then, and to enable them to call in if they want to. But I think, I mean, that's an interesting distinction, right? And if public comment only can be made on specific agenda items, as they pertaining to that. So I'd like to explore it with, with that as an idea, easier than education, I thought always the best, but for all the complications, right? I really like the time of the sun.
It's a sort of discussion I'd like to add on to that. When we had those incidents before, actually, we had like two right in row. The first one, I was like, what? You know, it wasn't until we ran into the second one that I realized what was going on. And my concern is, yes, they'll start talking about trees or whatever we're talking about, and they'll start in it, and then we're listening to it going, you know, confused just before they're gone off. And we have the ability to hang up the call or whatever that, whatever we do, if they're calling in and start ranting, is there a ability?
From a technical standpoint, absolutely cut off from a legal standpoint. So if they, if they say, you know, they're gonna talk about a certain agenda item, and they start the conversation, and then they go into the rant or whatever they want to say, we don't, at that point, cannot cut them off?
Physically, we can, but if they're talking about anything related to the subject, even if what they're talking about is hateful, we can't.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned, like I said, they might use that as a way to get in to talk to us, and then just start going into the rants or whatever they want to call them, and we are listening to them. So that's a concern.
As member Moore said.
Thank you, there. Christina, and Kim, I think there is a facility where you can in advance write in a question. Am I correct about that?
Are you stating that you could, members of the public, write public comment and send it into CC public comment, and then it becomes part of our agenda we supplement? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so it's really a moot point that, you know, if you're elderly or if you're busy, that you can't make the meeting, because you really can't, because you can put in whatever question that you want to put in. So again, we're complying with the Brown Act. And I think, again, you know, if we vote to go forward with this relative to allowing it, and it happens again, shame on us, I'm sorry. I, again, I stated this, I watched those high school kids' faces when this happened, and it was horrible to see their faces. And so, and one public comment was, oh, well, these are kids, you know, they listen to curse words every day. That hate speech was horrible. Hate, any type of hate speech, I don't care what it is, we shouldn't, if there's anything that we can do not to allow, we should, we should do it. So that's my comment, thank you.
And I think, councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I urge my colleagues that this is, this is about the people's business. We are doing the people's business. I don't think that we should have any additional, that we should be able to come and go and, you know, travel and calling from vacation, calling because we're out of town, calling because we have business to do, calling because we're at a conference, yet our residents can't enjoy that privilege. I think that that is, I've never enjoyed such privilege, and so to me, it is very uncomfortable to do. I think that the kids who have attended and our youth would be horrified that their council would block their access via technology. A lot of the high school kids, college kids, they don't even, they don't even make calls, they text, they're online, they're streaming, that is their way in mode, and that is the way of the future and the new generation. And I think, you know, we need to adapt, we need to meet people where they are, because we are doing their business. I also think this happened six months ago, we're barely getting back to this issue. It's about access. You know, I know for me, talking about sending in public comment and emailing, saying that to a busy mom with three little kids, saying that to somebody who's maybe elderly, saying that to somebody who works two jobs, saying that to somebody who commutes over two hours, we could easily submit all of our council comments via email, and we would have no need to be here, but it is simply more effective, it is more convenient, it is more poignant to have conversations in person and to do business. When you do business with people, you typically, it's an important piece of business you make. And so I think it is important to provide that access to people. And so I, you know, I would hope that we could, if the county is able to manage this with 2 million residents, they are much further exposed than the city of Morgan Hill with 45 residents. We worry about the anomaly, and I can tell you that, I mean, I'm, I have the county meetings and every meeting they have, there's, they're not having any issues, I'll tell you, they're not having this issue. And so for us to deny all of these people this convenience and more, it's really, I don't know what to say. So, you know, again, I would say there's no cost to this. The only cost would be to our residents if we were to block them out from access to their, to their own business. So I don't move that we do, you know, it sounds like there's more to be had once we decide this, and that's fine, but I would certainly like to move to resume access, Zoom access, maybe it's some other, I don't know, maybe it's not Zoom with the verification, so I don't want to limit it to Zoom, but I would like to certainly move to adopt and move back, return to the future, if we can, go back to the future.
Remote comments, that's what you're, yeah, you're saying.
For remote access, yes.
We have a motion by councilwoman Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I would, I'd like to make a friendly, I'd limit it to a specific agenda item somewhere.
What exactly does that mean?
I explained it earlier, what that means is that gives the presiding officer the authority to legally cut off someone when that person is no longer speaking to the particular council, whereas during the three minutes, you know, public, what is it called, public comment period, right, at the beginning of our evening agenda, you can say anything you want, right, has nothing to do with anything on the agenda. But that, that part will not be allowed remotely, but if you want to speak on agenda item number five, you're entitled to it.
So you're saying the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which is general in nature, on the evening that is not on the agenda, that does not provide access remotely?
Yes, if that's a first amendment, the presiding officer can interrupt that speech during the time allocated, because it's legal, whereas if someone does not speak on the particular agenda, the presiding officer can stop them.
Okay, so all of the other items, they would be able to have remote access on, it would not be up to the presiding officer to determine whether or not they are able to speak on it?
Wait, can you weigh in on this? Is that, is that legal to do? Excludes one, but allow others?
I know that there are other cities looking into that, cities out of state that do it.
Yeah.
There are cities also that put remote public comment on items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting, so they take, they split it, so that in-person public comment is first, and the agenda is where they take remote public comment and Zoom, is primarily so that their city employees and members of the public that don't want to hear hate speech have an opportunity to leave, because it is hostile working there in this subject. Our team is that.
So it sounds like this isn't something that we'd have yet, so I guess I would, you know, I would say I would like to move forward with access to Zoom comments, and then we can always come back and talk about what, you know, may happen or might happen with the ability to, with the general public comment, but I want to, I want to resume.
So you stay with your original motion, is there a question?
Well, it sounds like there is no, if that's, so that's what I'm saying, I guess we should move forward.
No, you respect that, that's correct. If that's existed, that's fine. I'm saying, that's why I'm not getting it.
I'm going to just say.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Well, we would need to, I don't think, I'm not sure, I think, that's why I say other cities in California are looking at it, we could certainly look at it as well, I just don't know, but that's up to my head, to treat those, to protect public comment, I suspect if you're okay with that, just one second.
Okay, now rephrase, if the city attorney comes back, quickly determine that would be open, if you were limited to remote public comment to on the agenda.
I think at this point, I would, I would like to go with this motion to provide access to Zoom comments. If you want me to substitute motion, but I, I think, especially with residents, you know, are we going to also subject them to, you cannot make any public comment, you live in the city of Morgan Hill, you know you live in the city of Morgan Hill, but you can't make the comment on a general public comment, you can only comment on the items. And I, I just, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with that. So, I mean, I would be happy to come back and discuss that, but I think that right now, most interested six months later in us getting access to.
So put the stake, can we say, you want to stake with your original motion?
Yeah, that's what I, I mean.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, do we have a second? There is no second, that dies.
Okay.
No further comments needed, that, this item is dead, and it goes on forever.
Okay, well, I had a really substitute motion, which is why I said.
They said, they said there was, no, no, we asked for a second, please, no one responded to a second.
No, I asked, he was gonna do, suggest he did a substitute motion.
I didn't know what he wanted to say. The pause point is, you and I know that we're in the second meeting, and if you don't, you know.
Well, if.
Hold on, councilmember, no, hold on, councilmember.
If you.
Oh, 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 no, 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 no.
Then I could support.
The, you have made a motion. There was no second.
I understand that, but I asked.
No, it's not, it's not.
I realize that you don't want to move forward with this item.
No, councilmember, councilmember.
But please allow a process.
Point forward, hold on, just one second, I'm trying to make, it's a process now. That was a, if a council member would like to make a motion.
I'm making a motion, so I'm making a motion to allow public comment, again, to limit it to items on the agenda.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, Paul and Shaver.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll go. Oh, so that passes three to two. Okay, there it is. We will then go on to item number 19, provide direction regarding options for public art funding.
Meeting council, eight hundred minutes, assistance manager for development services, meeting teammates and members of the public, thank you for saving the best for the last.
Thank you, Kim.
How do we transition from the last conversation to this one?
I don't know. Come right in, yep.
All right, I, I know that is late, we're here today to have a conversation about public art funding. And what happened for you is a bit of an analysis as well as some recommendations from staff on how to move forward. In Morgan Hill, we already have guidance, by the general plan and by the campaign specific plan, to move forward as foreign artists, to enhance the visibility of art and elevate creative culture. We also have a volunteer commission, the Library of Culture and Arts Commission, that supports the city in growing projects, art installations, and preserving public art collection, as well as building programs for cultural events. We have a public art inventory. collection, as well as building programs for cultural events. We have a public art inventory of forty independent art pieces, that the history of sculptures and murals. But we also have a number, a much bigger number of basemaking features throughout the community. We also have programs that support culture, like art of art, open studios, and rotating art displays. Now, when it comes down to funding, the Singapore Hill does not have a dedicated source of funds for public art. As I mentioned, the, the commission is a volunteer commission, as well as the staff dedicated to support this is limited. Uh, so a lot of the work and the influence that we've been able to do is through gift donations, grants, and fundraising. Uh, we, we do have a little bit of fundraising that remained from a previous, um, project. Uh, it's only about forty-eight thousand dollars that have supported some programming going forward. However, in the city, in addition to the programming from the commission, we have also and always continue to look at ways to integrate art within the physical structure of our public projects. An example is the parking garage, where you have a staircase, and we were able to, instead of just having a concrete enclosed staircase, we were able to create this beautiful glass staircase that looks like Obi Jaxor. Or, uh, in the magical bridge, we have a number of art features integrated within the playground structures. So when looking at public art fees, uh, there's some tensions in the report. Uh, but many communities that want to move forward in, in bringing more intention with public art, they attach what is called a percentage fee to public and/or private development. Um, projects, when communities do this, is usually done in a way where the, the city evaluates the actual construction cost of the project, and then attaches a specific percentage fee. And this percentage fee could range from half a percent to two percent. And then those fees could range, depending on whether it's a public project, a private project, a housing project, or a, a project that's small or small. So there's a, a wide range of approaches that could we, uh, look at for those fees. Um, with that, our transition to, we recognize that there's so many benefits to public art, including supporting the community's identity, uh, promoting inclusiveness, creating place-making, supporting tourism and economic development. However, recognizing that moving forward with, with policies that apply an actual fee to development can also present some challenges. Right now, with the economic conditions, the high interest rates, the cost of construction, uh, another, yet another fee could make some of these projects even more challenging to get through the development process. We have seen a number of projects come to a dead halt because of lack of funding right now. And if we, as the city, choose to move forward with applying such a fee to public projects, when our projects are already razor-thin, and we already have to value-engineer the projects, if we, as a community, choose to, to apply a percentage fee to public projects, it is possible that the general fund would have to backfill that commitment. With that, uh, as I, I, I move to conclude the presentation, I do think that I want to leave you with some hope. We, right now, from the staff's perspective, we're not ready to recommend moving forward with a fee on public art. But we recognize the importance of doing other stuff to continue to promote, uh, arts and culture in the community. We have a gift of this amazing art gallery that, if you have seen, the construction is absolutely beautiful. It is a beacon for where we want to go with public art, but it stands alone. And we recognize, and we have been having a number of conversations with, uh, the developers about how can we, as a city, do other activities that support an ecosystem that can make this art gallery sustainable in the long run. So that could look like creating more maker spaces that not only brings space for artists to do their work, but also to support additional retail within the community. Um, so there's a number of possibilities that we can do. We can support, uh, grant funding, continue, we already do that. Uh, we're not always successful. Often, uh, art grants, um, look for communities that show use a lot of community, which is typical for us as a community to go seek those, those grants, um, as well as, um, government agencies are not always as successful at making those grants. But if we can continue to, to pursue that, I always look at what can we do within the rules and regulations of the city, and we just get out of the way. And we have, to a great extent, uh, you see a number of murals and activations that take place in our community, and that is a way where the city is relaxing the, the regulations. But we can even do more than that. We can look at our design guidelines, or our, that are developed in design guidelines, and actually have an objective standard that says we want to have some form of sun art within the project, right? Now, we're not attaching it to a fee of the construction of that project, but we are saying we want you to do something and integrate some public art. So we've been in conversations with the team as to how that could be. Um, and then, uh, we can also look at partnerships with the downtown, uh, property basic improvement district, the tourism district, uh, the, the developers that are actively promoting downtown, to see how we can collaborate with creating more spaces, maybe bring in the Urban Lab Institute, and do a technical study that can create even more ideas for us, and how we can pursue other, um, opportunities such as affordable housing with maker spaces. So with that, I will conclude with the policy question for you, which is, should the city consider a public art requirement for public and/or private development? And should, um, staff continue to explore opportunities to increase, um, art culture in Morgan Hill? And that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, councilmember, move your way. Uh, thank you, Mayor. When you say private development, what, what do you mean by private development?